Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. The first order of business is what I call the preliminaries. This is where I go through some of the basics and explain how we will operate tonight. Town meeting is not the public comment section of a select board or school committee meeting, nor is it a public forum or a public hearing. What town meeting is, is the legislature for the town of Ashland, and tonight we are sitting in legislative session. Excuse me. Together we collectively approve the town budget, vote on capital purchases, approve bylaws, and more. My name is Adam Schuster and I am the moderator. My job as moderator is to serve as the presiding officer of this legislature. I believe that part of my job is also to ensure that those here and attendants understand what is going on, so I'll do my best to explain anything out of the ordinary which shouldn't happen tonight. If at all, if at any time you have a question about something, please ask, as there are likely others with the same question. Additionally, I feel that I have an obligation to provide a fair opportunity for voters to be heard and discuss the issues, and I also respect your time and avoid lengthy and repetitious debate. I will do my best to strike a fair balance. I'll be guided in running town meeting by the third edition of Town Meeting Time, which is published by the Mass Moderators Association and is generally recognized as the authoritative guide to running town meetings in Massachusetts. Joining me at the front of the auditorium are members of the school committee, members of the select board, members of the finance committee, town council, Jay Talerman, town manager Michael Herbert, assistant town manager Jim Ball, finance director Tana Ganna, Brittany Yakoponi, and assistant public school superintendent Jim Adams. With me on stage is Tara Ward, town clerk. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for later rebroadcast on WACA TV. Welcome to those watching us. When you checked in this evening, you received a blue index card. It is important that you hang on to these cards, as you will not be able to vote without them. Because votes will be counted based on the display of cards, non-voters and members of the press may sit anywhere in the auditorium. I will generally be able to determine the results of each vote by a simple show of cards. In the event I am unable to do so, we have a teller here to help perform an actual vote count, and the teller's already been sworn in. Please ensure that you've turned all cell phones and other electronic devices to mute. If you have to take or make a phone call during these proceedings, please leave the auditorium to do so. The warrant that was posted and from which we are working tonight constitutes a notice or warning to all voters of what we will discuss tonight. Town meeting can only take action within the scope of an article on the posted warrant. Town meeting acts on motions. If there isn't a motion before town meeting, no action including discussion can take place. In order to allow for discussion, I will entertain a motion and a second for that motion after each article has been introduced and explained before discussion commences. Once a motion has been made and seconded, it is subject to amendments from the floor. The procedures for amending an article are listed in the back of your handbook in the section titled Selected Town Meeting Procedures. If you have a question or comment during discussion of an article, make your way to one of the two microphones and wait to be recognized. After being recognized, please state your name and address, and direct all your remarks to the moderator. Please keep comments brief and ensure they relate directly to the article being discussed. If you are unable to get to one of the microphones, please raise your hand and I will have a microphone brought to you when it is your turn. To ensure we are able to hear from the greatest number of people, each speaker will be limited to one 90-second turn at the microphone during discussion of the article. We don't have a countdown clock today, so we'll use my clock. Time permitting, speakers may return to the microphone for a second time once all others wishing to speak have done so, but that second term will be limited to one minute.
If you are responding to a question, please do so through the moderator. There should be no direct discussion between parties at town meeting. All debate is to be conducted in a respectful and courteous manner. No comments of a personal nature are to be made. Root behavior, especially shouting, bullying, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling or unable to comply with this rule will be removed. I'd also ask everyone, the vast mass assembled here tonight, to refrain from applause and similar outbursts during discussions. We have eight articles in the warrant, and they'll all be addressed one way or the other before leaving this evening. One quick announcement, the Ashland holiday stroll will take place this Saturday from 11 to 5:00. There will be shopping along Main and Front Streets from 11 to 4:00. Gather in front of the tree for cocoa cider and cookies at 3:30 while waiting for Santa to drive by and the tree to be lit at 4:30. We'll start with the moderators' motions. The moderators' motions are listed in your handbook on page four. They are the same standard motions we approve each town meeting, so I'll ask to address them as a group. Do I have a motion to approve the moderators' motions 1, 2, 3, and 4 as printed in the handbook?
No move.
All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. On to our business for the night. Article 1, Free Cash Transfer, sponsored by the town manager and finance director. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash some of money to be placed in the stabilization fund, OPEB trust fund, special education special education special fund special education special fund 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 special
Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. The first order of business is what I call the preliminaries. This is where I go through some of the basics and explain how we will operate tonight. Town meeting is not the public comment section of a select board or school committee meeting, nor is it a public forum or a public hearing. What town meeting is, is the legislature for the town of Ashland, and tonight we are sitting in legislative session. Excuse me. Together, we collectively approve the town budget, vote on capital purchases, approve bylaws, and more. My name is Adam Schuster, and I am the moderator. My job as moderator is to serve as the presiding officer of this legislature. I believe that part of my job is also to ensure that those here and attendants understand what is going on, so I'll do my best to explain anything out of the ordinary, which shouldn't happen tonight. If at all, if at any time you have a question about something, please ask, as there are likely others with the same question. Additionally, I feel that I have an obligation to provide a fair opportunity for voters to be heard and discuss the issues, and also respect your time and avoid lengthy and repetitious debate. I will do my best to strike a fair balance. I'll be guided in running town meeting by the third edition of Town Meeting Time, which is published by the Mass Moderators Association and is generally recognized as the authoritative guide to running town meetings in Massachusetts. Joining me at the front of the auditorium are members of the school committee, members of the select board, members of the finance committee, town council, Jay Talerman, town manager, Michael Herbert, assistant town manager, Jim Ball, finance director, Tanagana, Brittany Yakaponi, and assistant public school superintendent, Jim Adams. With me on stage is Tara Ward, town clerk. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for later rebroadcast on WACA TV. Welcome to those watching us. When you checked in this evening, you received a blue index card. It is important that you hang on to these cards, as you will not be able to vote without them. Because votes will be counted based on the display of cards, non-voters and members of the press may sit anywhere in the auditorium. I will generally be able to determine the results of each vote by a simple show of cards. In the event I am unable to do so, we have a teller here to help perform an actual vote count, and the teller's already been sworn in. Please ensure that you've turned all cell phones and other electronic devices to mute. If you have to take or make a phone call during these proceedings, please leave the auditorium to do so. The warrant that was posted and from which we are working tonight constitutes a notice or warning to all voters of what we will discuss tonight. Town meeting can only take action within the scope of an article on the posted warrant. Town meeting acts on motions. If there isn't a motion before town meeting, no action, including discussion, can take place. In order to allow for discussion, I will entertain a motion and a second for that motion after each article has been introduced and explained before discussion commences. Once a motion has been made and seconded, it is subject to amendments from the floor. The procedures for amending an article are listed in the back of your handbook in the section titled Selected Town Meeting Procedures. If you have a question or comment during discussion of an article, make your way to one of the two microphones and wait to be recognized. After being recognized, please state your name and address, and address, and direct all your remarks to the moderator. Please keep comments brief and ensure they relate directly to the article being discussed. If you are unable to get to one of the microphones, please raise your hand, and I will have a microphone brought to you when it is your turn. To ensure we are able to hear from the greatest number of people, each speaker will be limited to one ninety-second turn at the microphone during discussion of the article. We don't have a countdown clock today, so we'll use my clock. Time permitting, speakers may return to the microphone for a second time once all others wishing to speak have done so, but that second term will be limited to one minute. If you are responding to a question, please do throw, do so through the moderator. There should be no direct discussion between parties at town meeting. All debate is to be conducted in a respectful and courteous manner. No comments of a personal nature are to be made. Root behavior, especially shouting, bullying, and personal attacks, will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling or unable to comply with this rule will be removed. I'd also ask everyone, the vast mass assembled here tonight, to refrain from applause and similar outbursts during discussions. We have eight articles in the warrant, and they'll all be addressed one way or the other before leaving this evening. One quick announcement, the Ashland Holiday Stroll will take place this Saturday from eleven to five. There will be shopping along Main and Front Streets from eleven to four. Gather in front of the tree for cocoa cider and cookies at three thirty while waiting for Santa to drive by and a tree to be lit at four thirty. We'll start with the moderators' motions. The moderators' motions are listed in your handbook on page four. They are the same standard motions we approve each town meeting, so I'll ask to address them as a group. Do I have a motion to approve the moderators' motions one, two, three, and four as printed in the handbook?
Still moved.
All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Onto our business for the night. Article one, Free Cash Transfer, sponsored by the town manager and finance director. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash some of money to be placed in the stabilization fund, OPEB trust fund, special education, special purpose stabilization account, and/or capital account, or pass any voter taking any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town vote to transfer from free cash some of one million two hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars to the general stabilization fund, the sum of two hundred and two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars to the OPEB trust fund, and the sum of six hundred and seven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars to the capital account. Michael's issue of Brittany. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming to town meeting. This is in alignment with our financial policies, which we've had in place for several years now and that we've benefited from. This transfers free cash into three distinct accounts. The first one is our rainy day fund at one million two hundred and fifteen thousand one eighty-one. That will bring us up to seven million eight hundred and twenty-four thousand in our rainy day fund. We put two hundred and two thousand into our OPEB trust fund. OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits. That brings our balance to five million one hundred and thirty thousand, and then we have six hundred and seven thousand five ninety going to capital, which, capital projects which were deferred from town meeting in April, or the spring.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one million two hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars to the stabilization fund, sum of two hundred and two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars to the OPEB trust fund, and the sum of six hundred and seven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars to the capital account. Do I have such a motion?
Still moved.
Seeing no discussion, we'll move to an immediate vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article two, Reauthorization of Public Safety Building Bonds, sponsored by the Select Board. See if the town will vote to expand the authorized purpose of the borrowing approved by Article nine of the November twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen town meeting to include authorizing expenditure of any remaining funds on the cost of site preparation, construction, equipping, and furnishing a new public safety building located at twelve sixteen Union Street, including payment of all incidental and related costs of the public safety facility located at twelve Union Street, Ashland, or pass any voter taking any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. What this article does is it reauthorizes the three point five million dollars that was authorized at town meeting in two thousand and eighteen explicitly for the design engineering for the public safety building. It reauthorizes that to be used also for construction. It does not add to the budget at all, it just gives us more flexibility on how we use that three point five million.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to expand the authorized purpose of the borrowing approved by Article nine of the November twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen town meeting to include authorizing expenditure of any remaining funds on the cost of site preparation, construction, equipping, and furnishing a new public safety building located at twelve sixteen Union Street, including the payment of all incidental and related costs of the public safety facility located at twelve Union Street. Do I have such a motion?
Still moved.
Seeing no discussion, we'll move to an immediate vote. Given this article involves borrowing, it will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article three, Property Tax Exemption, sponsored by the Select Board. See if the town will vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one C and a half, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July two thousand and twenty-one, or pass any voter taking any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the property tax exemption percentage be set at eleven point two five percent, as recommended by the Board of Assessors. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is an annual article that we do each fall. This sets an exemption amount for qualifying seniors. This year, as in last year, we set the percentage at eleven point two five percent. That actually equates to eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars of property tax relief for qualifying seniors. So far this year, we've had a hundred and fifteen applications. It's ranged from a hundred and forty-two in a year to a hundred and seventy-five.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one C and a half, to eleven point two five percent, to be effective for exemptions granted the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have such a motion?
Still moved.
Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article four, Extend End Date of Riverwalk Trail Enhancement, Mill Park, Mill Pond Park Beautification and Stone Bungalow Preservation Project, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to extend the time by which funds need to be spent on the following Community Preservation Committee-approved projects. River Trail Enhancement Project, to complete the design and construction of the Sudbury River Trail Riverwalk until December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. Mill Pond Beautification Project, to beautify Mill Pond Park and provide funding to increase accessibility to the Riverwalk until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Town Forest Restoration, Restoration Project Phase Two, to preserve the remains of the stone bungalow until December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, or pass any voter taking any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town vote to extend the time by which the funds need to be spent for the community preservation projects as written in Article four.
Erin Ladd, the Community Preservation Committee, one fifty-three Pleasant Street. As a high school educator, I don't like asking for additional time, but that's what these are asking for. We try to write into our warrant articles a deadline to when to spend funds, and as a result of COVID, a lot of these projects are underway but haven't been finished. The Riverwalk Trail, as you've noticed, the beautiful bridge has been completed and a lot of stonework, but we're still exploring the potential of a second bridge on the second half of the river. The Mill Pond Park project is done on the side of the new bridge, but again, we're working on the other side of the river at the red dock area to try to complete that as well. And work in the town forest has been delayed as well, again, by COVID availability of workers, that they've just been able to find the right people during this COVID outbreak. So the extensions of the timelines are based off of projects having difficulty the last year getting completed, and this is a chance to give them extra shot clock.
Thank you. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to extend the time by which funds need to be spent for the community preservation projects as written in Article four. Do I have such a motion?
Still moved.
Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of Article four, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article five, Authorized Funding for Marathon Park Enhancement, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to appropriate ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars in Community Preservation Act to fund improvements at three thirty-three Pleasant Street to include removal of invasive species, add plantings, landscaping, hardscaping, installation, and relocation of new and existing signage, power washing, complete and add porous pavers to existing walkways, add additional plaques and benches, other related tasks for the parcel known as Marathon Park, from the following accounts: forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in the open space account, and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the historical account. With the stipulation, the town receive any and all permits prior to the disbursement of any funds, said funds to be available until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, at which time any unexpended funds will be returned to their funding sources or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town vote to appropriate ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars, forty-eight seven fifty from the open space account, and forty-eight seven fifty from the undesignated reserves account, to fund improvements at three thirty-three Pleasant Street. I will note that the finance committee's recommended motion is different, recommendation is different than the article language, and that's because the CPC wanted to make a change in the funding source, but given that the funding source was specifically noted on the warrant, they couldn't make, I wouldn't allow them to make the funding change that they wanted to. And I think Mr. Ladd will speak to that a little bit more in his presentation. So, Mr. Ladd.
So this is an exciting new project on the other half of the river. So as we mentioned before, we're working on the east side of the river at a new bridge, Mill Pond Park. This is on the west side approaching the train station. So if you're not familiar, you drive down Pleasant Street, there's a historic park titled Marathon Park. It commemorates the history of the start of the Boston Marathon, and in two thousand and twenty-three, it'll be the hundredth anniversary of the last time that Ashland hosted it. So we're gearing up for a great anniversary and want to spruce up the park. This is really a chance to highlight the active waterfall that's there, the walkways, the signage, the landscaping, and really improve the park. It's a chance to really reinvigorate that to the hundredth anniversary. There's a new patio area, there's increased signage, there's a buffer to landscaping. So it's a really great improvement as we approach the anniversary. When we originally designed this project, we explored using historic funds because it's a historic park. Unfortunately, CPC guidelines dictate that that isn't usable loud for parks, so it needs to be a historic structure or historic building. So that's why we're making the change to use undesignated reserves instead. So we went back and looked at things and said, that's the account that it needs to come from, so we need to make that quick switch that it's the same totals amount, it's just rather than using historic funds, it would come from a different account. So I hope you appreciate the work that's gone into this to really upgrade this park and work on the work we've done along the Sudbury River and make a nice improvement to the area.
Thank you. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to appropriate ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars in Community Preservation Act to fund improvements at three thirty-three Pleasant Street to include removal of invasive species, add plantings, landscaping, hardscaping, installation, and relocation of new and existing signage, power washing, complete, and complete and add porous pavers to existing walkways, add additional plaques and benches, other related tasks for the parcel known as Marathon Park, from the following accounts: forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in the open space account, and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the undesignated reserves account. With the following stipulations, the town receive any and all permits prior to the disbursement of any funds said to be available until December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, at which time any unexpended funds will be returned to their funding sources and further funds, and that said funds shall be used in accordance with the rules and regulations applicable to construction on town property. Do I have such a motion?
Still moved.
Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. And that passes unanimously. Article six, MWRA Bond for INI Work, sponsored by the Select Board. See if the town will appropriate a sum of money to make infiltration and inflow improvements to the town sewer system, including improvements for infiltration and inflow reduction purposes that are eligible for loans or other financial assistance through the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority's INI Local Financial Assistance Program Phase eleven funding allocation. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Department of Public Works to determine whether such amounts should be raised by taxation, borrowing, transfer from available funds, or otherwise, and to authorize the Select Board to apply for and accept any grants that may be available to pay costs of such projects, or pass any vote or take any other action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town vote to appropriate five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make infiltration and inflow improvements to the town sewer system. Such funds may be raised by taxation, borrowing, transfer from available funds or otherwise, or upon authorization by the Select Board grants. The town treasurer, with approval of the Select Board, may borrow such funds under and pursuant to match or in law, Chapter forty-four. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is an article that we have done every other year, based on when the MWRA makes this available. Again, this says an appropriation of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I should note that seventy-five percent of that, or four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars, is actually coming to us as a grant, and the remainder of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred comes into, we can use as a no-interest.
So that's just going to be a backup when we switch?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town appropriate five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make infiltration and inflow improvements to the town sewer system, including improvements for infiltration and inflow reduction purposes that are eligible for loans, for other financial assistance, the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority's INI Local Financial Assistance Program Phase eleven funding allocation. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Department of Public Works to determine whether such amounts should be raised by taxation, borrowing, transfer from available funds, or otherwise, and to authorize the Select Board to apply for and accept any grants that may be available to pay costs of such projects, and to meet said appropriations the town treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to match or in law, Chapter forty-four, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with the match or in law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed, pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have such a motion?
Still moved.
Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Given this article involves borrowing, it will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of Article six, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article seven, Road Acceptances, High Street Extension and Weaver Road, sponsored by the Select Board. I just want to make a note here, the head, the title of the article is Accepting High Street Extension and Weaver Road, but due to a clerical error and Since Weaver Road is in the title, then I'll allow this article to go forward for both votes. See if the town will vote to accept as a public way either the provisions of match or in law, Chapter eighty-two, as amended, High Street Extension and Weaver Road, as laid out by the Select Board and shown on plans entitled Plan of Acceptance, High Street Extension, Weaver Road, Ashland, Mass., drawn by GLM Engineering Consultant Inc. June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, which plan is on file in the office of town clerk, and to accept such easements as are shown on said plans, or pass any vote or taking match or in law to thereto. Finance twenty-first, recommendations to town meeting. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So again, this is a road acceptance, acceptance of High Street Extension and Weaver Road. So for everybody who doesn't know what a road acceptance is, when a road is constructed by another party, such as a developer or an ETA, we do not take ownership of that until we check and confirm that it's being built to our standards. That has been done with this, with these two streets. It's been confirmed by our current party engineer. It's been voted on and signed by both the planning board and the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town votes to accept as public ways under the provisions of match or in law, Chapter eighty-two, as amended, High Street Extension and Weaver Road, as laid out by the Select Board and shown on plans entitled Plan of Acceptance, High Street Extension and Weaver Road, Ashland, Mass., drawn by GLM Engineering Consultant, Inc., dated June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, which plan is on file in the office of the town clerk, and to accept such easements as are shown on said plans. Do I have such a motion?
Still moved.
Discussion. Ooh, discussion.
Tricia Kendall, Sixth Reuben Acker Road, and current chair of the Ashland Planning Board. I just wanted to confirm, after putting my glasses on, that on November eighteenth, the planning board did vote to support the adoption of both High Street Extension and Weaver Road as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article eight, the most verbose article of the evening, which I am not going to read. Resolution to Call for Building Decarbonization in the Commonwealth Sponsored by the Sustainability Committee. See if the town will adopt the resolution calling for swift, just building decarbonization in the Commonwealth that is printed in the warrant, or take any other action relative thereto. The finance committee defers its recommendation to town meeting. Ashland. There you are.
Don't worry, this isn't counting against your time. It's okay. I speak fast, as most of the sustainability committee knows. You can go into presentation more if you don't mind. Or not. Thank you. And I promise we won't, we won't spend more than three minutes on this, as I've been told I have, only that much time anyway. I just wanted to quickly take the chance to introduce this resolution, so Ashland and Chindal. So Ashland Chindani, I lead the Sustainability Committee, I'm the chair. And a couple of years back, Ashland voted to adopt a resolution to move towards net zero by 2040. While the Sustainability Committee is continuing to work on a plan to get us there, we felt that it was important for us to actually put this resolution forward in this forum. If you can just move. We conducted as part of the planning for that net zero plan a greenhouse gas inventory, which really showed us that a really large portion of the emissions in this town come from buildings. In addition, if you really think about an average building life expectancy, you're typically looking at anywhere between 60 to 120 years, and about 76% of buildings in Massachusetts rely on fossil fuels as their primary source of energy. Massachusetts itself has a goal to achieve an 85% reduction in its emissions targets by 2050, so we are mandated as a state to achieve those goals. Michael, if you can go into the next slide. So we really need to start thinking about how we start that decarbonization process, and frankly, the only source that we are able to see today that can get us towards true decarbonization is electricity. Admittedly, electricity today is not fossil fuel-free, but in 2020 already, it has become the second most prevalent electricity source in the U.S., so certainly on the right trajectory. Within Ashland itself, we've already taken steps to start introducing a lot more solar. I think both from a municipal perspective, we've seen really great uptake on residential buildings as well. So it's our belief that if the state has to achieve its goals and we have to achieve our goals, we really have to start looking at how we're going to take buildings, decarbonize them, and move them towards a more energy-focused source of supply. If you can go to the next slide. So what we are calling for is for the Commonwealth as a whole to address building decarbonization. We have a legally binding requirement at the state level. And in addition, the state law today does not allow individual communities to take independent action. It is also the belief of the Sustainability Committee that it's not effective for individual local communities to take that kind of action independently, because, one, it leads to a patchwork of laws across the board. We're really looking for the state to take the step forward and give us some clarity in terms of rules that Ashland can use as a community to take additional appropriate action that's suitable for Ashland to take. We are focusing right now on new construction. We're not talking about retrofitting existing homes. That would need to be part of a larger plan. And we are also asking the state to mitigate the impact on economic justice populations. This is not a ban on fossil fuels. We've heard feedback from some town members with concerns that this might be impacting existing regulations in Ashland. We're not really looking at it from that perspective. We're looking at it as let the state do the right thing. This resolution will get posted to our legislative bodies in the state, and there are today good quality bills in both the Senate and the House that really look to achieve these goals. And finally, I'll just kind of call out the clear sort of things that I've already mentioned. So truly speaking, the only viable path for us to achieve a net zero in Ashland is through electrification. We have really good economically viable options for electrification in new construction. Targeting those new buildings today allows us to avoid those retrofits in the future. So again, rather than building something today that's going to live on, let's deal with the problem right now, and then really looking for the Commonwealth to make the adjustments in the legal structure to allow us to sort of make the right decisions. And we really are looking to join a number of our sister towns that have worked with us, the Rocky Mountain Institute, and a number of other organizations, to pass resolutions similar to this, or are working on resolutions similar to this, to join them to really put pressure on the state to pass those common sense laws and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town adopt the resolution as presented.
Still moved.
Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed? That passes, but not unanimously. There being no further business, I'll entertain a motion to dissolve.
Still moved.
All in favor, raise your cards. Opposed, we're not listening to you. Meeting adjourned.[1769.33][1769.33][applause][1770.33][1770.33][music][1771.33][1771.33][music]